I'm going to call the September 26, 2018 Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting to order at six on Friday. I want to note that the reason for the five-minute delay had to do with a staff who wasn't able to record the meeting. So, welcome everyone. Chairman Lomosko was unable to be with us this evening because of a work commitment. So, that being said, I would like to start with, whoops, yeah, to see if there are any citizens' comments. Seeing none, we will move on to the school committee chair updates. I have field updates and Lorraine didn't pass anything along to you, so we will move to the student representative report.
All right, so, starting off with sports, the football team is now three and oh after recently defeating Fitchburg High School at Tupperfield last Friday. Many students and parents came out to support the team in the thirty-two to two victory. Girls soccer recently defeated Lincoln Sudbury by one point, and girls volleyball entered the record in a three to zero win against North Middlesex. Girls field hockey hosted their annual game in honor of Michelle Farnsworth last week against Wachusett, winning with a score of five to zero. Boys soccer lost to Algonquin one to nothing, and the boys' most recent golf match was postponed due to the weather. Hale Cross Country faced Tingsboro earlier today, and tomorrow Florence Sawyer faces Oak Middle School, and Luther Burbank faces Rotten Dusel and their meet that was previously recently. So, for arts, the Neshoba Pet Band is preparing for the upcoming home football game on Friday, where they will pump up the team and hopefully lead them to a victory. Rehearsals for the fall play, a Christmas carol are in full swing. All cast members and parents are very excited to put on what we know will be an amazing show. The Triumph Musical Honor Society has been meeting and preparing for their first Neshoba Coffee House, which auditions were held for last week. At the Coffee House, students will be able to perform music they have prepared in small groups and individual acts in a fun social gathering. Middle school bands and choruses have been practicing in preparation for their concerts that will be held later this year. For events, to start off, Florence Sawyer will have their Go For Gold Friday this week, where students and staff will wear gold to support awareness for childhood cancer fighters and patients. Luther Burbank is holding a school safety presentation tonight, so parents may learn of the school's safety protocols and procedures. Hale Middle School had its back-to-school dance last Friday, where more than one hundred fifty students attended. They also had their sixth-grade outdoor adventure day today, where a team from Project Adventures guided students through a full day of exciting team-building exercises. After-school activities for all middle schools are in full swing, and the high school will be having an open house tomorrow, the twenty-seventh.
What an awesome report. I mean, I just feel so badly that it's not being televised right now, because that was an awesome report, and just the fact that, you know, you're bringing so much of the middle school to us as well as the high school, I love it. It's just fabulous. So, you did a really great job tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I would agree. And can you tell me a little bit more, tell us a little bit more about the Coffee House? Is it going to be at the high school, and have they set a date to start it, when it will be?
I haven't heard all the details about it. All I know is that they had auditions last week. I assume it...
Isn't that the Bolton Inn?
I was thinking, I believe I heard that thing.
I think it is, yeah.
That would be cool, having it at a Coffee House.
Yeah, that would be really cool, but I know a lot of people who have auditioned and made, put together acts with their friends.
Oh, really? Nice.
And what's the organization that runs it?
Triumph. It's the musical honor society at the high school.
And that's new, right? Last year, I think?
Yes, they introduced it last year.
This is their, yeah, this is their first full year, I guess.
First full year, yeah.
And I think they're trying to raise money for, is it Givenote founding, did you read, did you see that at all?
No, I haven't heard of that at all.
Yeah. For an organization that helps to fund different music programs and such, I think that's where some of the funds that the local community raises are going to go, but really, I'm good.
Sounds wonderful, and I hope you keep us posted.
Yeah, I will, definitely.
This was just perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
So, I, again, I feel really badly that this is not being televised, and you've got the weight of the shoulder on your shoulders tonight.
No worries, on your part.
So, the MCAS data, just so that you know, the MCAS data, that's still embargoed, I think until, I think tomorrow night at midnight or something like that, the MCAS data is still embargoed. But, of course, our administrators have access to it and have been reviewing it, looking for trends, looking for areas of strength, areas of challenge. What we've done well, we always give an annual presentation on our MCAS and the level of accountability and all that kind of thing, generally in October, so we'll probably be bringing that right around to you in the month of October, so you can look forward to that. Generally, our teaching and learning crew do that, they do a great job with that. I have a couple of housekeeping items to bring up, and I just put it under housekeeping items, because I've kind of talked about this before, and then there's another one or two of these items that are just like every year, I kind of go back over this. So, the first one is residency, and again, still having some little issues, I think we've resolved most of the issues, but I think, you know, it's the first time I've come up against really somebody who said, "I really didn't know that these were the rules. I really, I thought my child could just come to school here." No, they can't, so I want to say, you put us in an awful place if you don't live in one of our three communities and just decide to drop your child off at one of our schools. It doesn't work that way. And one of the things they kind of always have to keep in mind is that what they're really doing is also taking money away from a school district where that money should be going, whether it's Hudson or Clinton or wherever it is. Thank you. Did you find someone?
It's on. You can't see that it's on, but I confirmed with them that it is actually on.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, well, we're thrilled. Now, I take back everything I said about yours. So, going back to the residency, if you don't live in our three communities right now, we do not have school choice. It is not an option for you to drop your child off at one of our schools right now and expect that we will take them in. The second thing is just something I bring up every year, the second and third thing, emails, just a reminder that you always want to be cautious about emails. We have this discussion with our administrators and with our teachers as well, and with school committee. Just a general reminder that your emails are open for public, especially if there's an FOI request or something like that, so you always want to make sure, please don't use names, certainly don't ever put a student's name in there. Those just kind of common sense factors, just a reminder that we do that. We do that every year as soon as we come back in the month of September, so this is just my time to remind our school committee folks. The last one, again, this is just an FYI, every year, bring this up again, the FOI requests. Our past practice has been, certainly since I've been here, that we charge appropriately for FOI requests, and I think sometimes folks forget that, but we charge whatever that going rate is, that's levied by the state, is the rate for us to use, and that's what we use. Sometimes I think what people forget about is that if it's something that we have to pull down from Google Vault, there's another whole process that's involved. It's not as easy as just going in and grabbing the information and handing it over. It doesn't quite work like that. There are some processes that have to be put in place when we do that, and of course, then we have to go back and do any necessary reductions or whatever. So, there's always a process in place. The bottom line is, it doesn't matter whether it's a ten-dollar charge, or a fifty, or a five-hundred, or a two-thousand dollar, or whatever it is, people just need to keep that in the back of their mind, and we won't change that, because you can imagine that if we did, then everybody would want everything all the time, you know? So, and we generally, the other thing to know is that we never hand over that until we've received that check, so.
Just a couple of things. I think it's important to emphasize the fact that charging appropriately for these requests are in state law, and as well as the rate, and I'm aware that it has changed, it's a lot cheaper now than it was maybe five or six years ago, and also that I believe our practice is that when people make a request, we have the time of what the charge will be, so they can decide whether to move ahead or not. So, I just think in terms of the FOI requests, it's important to know those things, that we're not just making things up as we go along.
And we didn't, to be honest with you, I really didn't run into any real, really major problems with this. It's just last year, you know, I actually haven't really run into major problems in either year, but every year I could just come forward and just say, "Okay, remember these basic things," so that's all, this is just a general reminder about that. The third item, the superintendent and chief's annual Middlesex meeting, so the district attorney, Marion Ryan, and her, the gentleman who served in the position prior to her, did these meetings, and they're fabulous meetings, and it's all the superintendents in Middlesex that come to it, and all of our chiefs. And so, because Middlesex, or because Neshoba is kind of separated between Worcester County and Middlesex, Stowe's the only one that goes to the Middlesex one, but it's fabulous, and the takeaways from that are great for the district, not just Stowe. So, just so that you know, that you were represented this year by both our fire chief, Chief Landry, and our police chief, Chief Bosworth, as well as Representative Hogan was there, and Senator Eldridge was there, and I was there, so it was, we were very well represented at that meeting. It was really, really positive, it was very well-attended, and we talked through things about safety, we talked about different initiatives that Middlesex has going right now that we'll be able to tap into. It was really, really positive, really, really good, so I just want to put that out there and let you know, and special thanks to everyone from Stowe who attended, it was great. Parent safety meetings, so our last one is right now, it's happening right as we sit here in Lancaster. We've held one in Stowe, one in Walton, and one in Lancaster. In total, you know, if you add up all of the parents across the three, probably around a hundred parents in total is how they came up to the various meetings, very well-received. I think one of the things I really appreciated, now, I was at the Stowe one, Todd is representing us right now in Lancaster, and he'll be joining us shortly, but there were a lot of really good questions, and one of the questions that came out, and I thought, "This is as good a time as I need to bring up some of this kind of thing." One of the parents had asked me, first of all, about, "Well, aren't there things already in place and have been for twenty years, and you just needed to redo some of this?" It's not that simple. We have to make something that's made in Neshoba, something that works for Neshoba values, that works for our schools, so you can take some things, like the flip chart, I had alluded to that earlier, and you take the Nalmak suggestions, and you cross-reference that with what you had previously from twenty years ago, and then you try to make it all match to fit current times. So, it isn't as easy as saying, "Oh, there's a flip chart over there, I can just grab that and we can use it." You really have to make sure it's tailor-made for Neshoba, for everything, the flip chart and everything, so that, I thought that was a really good question. Another question came out about an incident at the high school last year, and they said, "Well, we learned more from the police than we did from the school district," and that's exactly true, and that's exactly how it has to be. And I think that that's one of the things that I think, one of the reasons that our relationship that's so closely linked between our school district and the police department serves our parents well, because we can't say some things that the police can say. Now, vice versa, there's sometimes, there are other opportunities where we're able to do things that the police can't do, but because of that nice partnership, we're able to capitalize on that. So, that parent was absolutely right, I was so glad that the question was asked, because it gave me an opportunity to say, "Yes, you're absolutely right, and that's exactly how it should play out," because we can't talk about mental health issues, we can't talk about specific students, we can't talk about that kind of thing. What's on the police blotter is out of my control, you know, so. So, I think the other thing that I really appreciate, there's a gentleman at the back that spoke out, again, this is going back to the Stowe meeting, that said, you know, I think that it's really, and I'm paraphrasing him, so I think it's not invented by this tonight, but he said, "This is something that we have to all look at as a community. This is not a school district issue, this is not a police issue, this is not, you know, a parent, this is all of our issue." I was very respectful of some of the comments that he made that night, too, so I would say, all in all, I think the parent safety meetings went very, very well. One of the final questions I'll bring up tonight is, that was asked, was, "What about training the students now? Like, where do we go next, right?" And so, and my thing was, I didn't want to do anything until we went to the parents first, and so here's where we're at. So, I think you'll see us now start to make a move to the high school, and see if we can't start there and do some Alice training with the high school. We've talked through a plan, Principal Dina Minako and I, of what that might look like, so I think that we're pretty close to that. I think that I'm comfortable right now with moving something a little bit more watered down, though, for our grade seven and eights, you know, I think that we can do something there as well. The lower grades, though, you know, you really are looking at, you need to listen to the adult in the room, the adult in the room knows the information, that's where you need to be taking your lead as a student, you know, whereas the older students can help to do the barricading or to do the whatever. So, you'll see that, that will be our next phase, moving into the month of October. So, anything else? I think that's probably it for the safety meetings. Anyway, special thanks to everyone who came up, special thanks especially Lisa Goldbicky, who's done so much work in this area, and our, again, our local law enforcement and fire officials who work so closely with us, that's just really a special gift that we've got right now. The last item, not nearly as much fun, of course, as budget FY20. Pat's already started in their meetings with the administrators as they start to take a look to next year, the anticipated costs that we know that we can see coming, the contractual costs, we start to lay those what-if pictures now, and those are lengthy, like, it's a lot to create that, especially with the contractual obligations and going through every single staff member and working it all through. It takes a lot of time to do that, so we're starting to work in that area, and I think that, I think we'll be on target to come up with a number for you for December, but we all know that that's not the number that we'll end up with, but that'll say, here's where we're at right now. So, I think those were my key points tonight. Any questions on any of this? No? Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. So, now, we will have the business and operations report. You will join us back. Thank you.
Everyone. Can you bring up?
I'm good. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Got it. So, I have for you the July treasurer's report from our district treasurer. As you can see, for the month of July, revenue was down a little bit, but it's the start of the fiscal year, and as you can see, if you can scroll to the next one. You can see that the revenue has started to come in from the state and from the local communities in the month of August. Does anybody have any questions? Any thoughts?
Where is that grant money distributed? In what accounts? Or are they just, anytime there's an increase, that's money from the state? Am I assuming that?
When I say money from the state, that would be a piece of our Chapter Seventy money, it could be grant funds.
Right, okay.
Anything from the state.
So, anything, and it's all sort of distributed within these accounts here?
It comes in through MMD, too.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Pat?
No.
Okay. So, moving to the next.
Okay, so, are you going to present about the donation?
Yes.
The high school? Okay?
Yes, so, I have a letter here to inform you that AIS Inc., located in Lemonster, Massachusetts, has partnered with the Neshoba Regional High School on a design-thinking classroom redesign project under the direction of Mary Marata. The cost of the donated items is forty-two hundred dollars. The items, all codes, if anybody was concerned about that, and this letter is from Principal Paul D. D'Amico.
And are those the seats at the bottom?
At the bottom, yes. There are seats and tables.
Oh, my goodness. Do they, they're waiting for us to approve the donation so they can acquire them?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Pat about the donation?
I move that we approve the, accepting the donation from AIS to the high school for the new style seating.
At the amount of?
At the amount of forty-two hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Wow. This looks really cool looking at.
Now, is this going to be in a classroom at the high school?
Yes, I believe that's exactly where it's going. She's doing a lot of, Mary's doing a lot of interesting work in this particular area with this particular company, it's really interesting to watch unfold right now.
It would be good to have, like, at some point, maybe at the end of the year, to see what they've done this year, because this is exciting.
They were involved, the students were involved in a design project, and we should really have her come in and talk about it.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, then we have a Hale Middle School donation.
Right, actually, we have two donations here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, from Principal Kyle Grady at the Hale Middle School, he's requesting the approval to accept two separate donations on behalf of his middle school there. The first donation is from a Stowe parent-teacher organization, and they've offered to contribute twenty-five hundred dollars toward the purchase and installation of a new smart board and projector in their digital literacy and computer science classroom. I'm grateful to be aligned with the Stowe PTO, and they are a motivated group who are dedicated to the success of our students. So, there are two here, so.
So, we should do one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay, so, with regard to the first donation?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
I move that we accept the donation from the Stowe PTO, the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
For?
For the electronic board and the smart board and projector for the digital program.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. The second donation?
The second donation is from a Stowe resident, Mr. Russ Fitch. Mr. Fitch has offered to donate his upright piano to our music program. The piano was his late wife's, and one that he remembers her playing with great joy. The piano will help us to expand our after-school music program.
I move that we accept the donation from Mr. Russ Fitch of a piano, to an upright piano, to be used in the after-school music program and as a backup for other performances.
Second.
Second.
Please. Any questions? Discussion?
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's so exciting.
It really is.
It's really neat when you see this happen. Very, very appreciative.
Okay, so, the next item of new business is a presentation of the district communication plan. After we see the communication plan, we will review the superintendent's goals for the upcoming year, and I just want to mention that one of the goals that you will see has to do with communication and the creation of the plan, so, this is the plan. This is going to present it. Do you have handouts? Is it all in here?
Should be all there.
All right, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And actually, I'll tee it up to start, and then we'll turn it over to.
Okay, just, so, just for clarity's sake, there is a present, presentation that Todd is going to show us, but in your packet is sort of like the specifics of it, so, as he's showing us that, if you want more detail, you can look at the presentation, it's in the packet. I'm done?
Okay. So, just to tee it up a little bit before we turn it over, to give some background, some context to this, so, when I first came into the district, it was noted that communication was an area that was lacking at a number of different levels, and then as we went through the year, we could see that there were some other things that were coming up, that were cropping up, and we thought, "You know what? We really need to get a different handle on this." It was mentioned in my evaluation, I think, that year as well, and so we took a look, and we said, "Okay, so, this upcoming year, which was last year, what we're going to do is take the year to really look at our communication across the district." And so, we actually had Jay Stewart, I think I've mentioned his name before to you, who was at that time the director for communication for the Department of Elementary and Secondary and Education. So, I felt that I had gone to the best to help us to find our way through all of this. He came in, and we started with two focus groups. We had had some conversation, first of all, with Lorraine, and said, "Okay, where do we see this going? What are we wanting to accomplish here?" And we felt that there were just a number of different levels that we wanted to go after, it wasn't just about one thing, it wasn't just about, like, the school out to the community, or the superintendent's office out to the community, we felt that it was multi-layered here. So, what we did was, we went back and had this discussion with Jay, so we talked about what we were looking for as our outcomes, anticipated outcomes, what we wanted to produce. We knew we wanted something that was relatively all-inclusive, you'll see on here, like, we were looking at parent and family, we were looking at crisis management, we were looking at all kinds of different things. So, Jay came back, and the first part of the process was after we made up several questions and were looking at, "Hi, Lord, please join us," we decided that we would have these host focus groups, and each school sent, for example, a parent that would represent their school council, for example, as one of, part of one of the focus groups, administrators may not, one of the focus groups, and so we went through with all the questions, and then Jay prepared a mini-report for us and gave it to us and said, "Okay, so here's what I'm seeing from the focus groups, but I think we need now, of course, to take this to the next level." And that's when we sent out the survey last year, and said, "Okay," and the survey was really designed to either affirm or tell us that this particular thing wasn't an issue, just to help clarify. So, he said that we got, I want to say around six hundred surveys back, which is a good return rate, we were thrilled with that return rate, and so, and of course, there were some areas of comments and that kind of thing, so folks made some additional comments, so, of course, then we got another report saying, "Okay, here's some, you know, salient points from what we found," and some different ideas of where you can go with this. And so, we took all of that, and we said, "Okay, so now, let's talk with the administrators," brought the administrators in, and Todd, and said, "Okay, we're going to talk about what this is going to look like now," and Jay was involved in that as well. And then, both Joel and Laura offered to take a lead role in this and work with Todd to design it at a tighter level. And exactly to Kathy's point, we came up with a present, but then we worked back and said, and that's the document that you've got in front of you, saying, "Okay, here's some greater detail," and we're going to go into greater detail on this tonight as well, but it gives you the highlights of what we're looking for, where we're aiming to land, and so, I'm going to turn it over to Todd, and Joel and Laura really are going to just kind of be here to support us on some additional questions that we haven't thought of or whatever, we'll take it back and have a fresh look at it. So, Todd, I'm going to turn it over to you, but that was where this all started.
Great. So, in your packets is this document, which mirrors what I'm going to present to you, but we also presented at the bottom of this document, and in one of each one of the areas of communication, a timeline, so that we could give you folks a timeline in terms of, you know, when we want to get things done by, you know, what we're currently doing and what we're aiming for, so that's what that document does as well. I want to thank.
I'm just thinking, too, I would want you to know that all of the administrators had a line in on this and were involved in different levels, so it wasn't just a case of getting all of the surveys and everything else, then we took it all together, and the entire administrative team was involved. Sorry.
So, I want to thank Joel Bates and Laura Friend, because from the get-go and from when I came on, the three of us worked together to kind of build a vision for this and really identify the four areas of communication that we thought were instrumental in the district, as well as weave in the values of, you know, clarity, consistency, and predictability as it relates to communication as a whole. We then brought what was a skeletal framework of that to our administrative team at our retreat this summer, we got feedback from them, and then built it from there, and then we also sat down with Jay Stewart from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, got his feedback, and then again, went back out with this to our administration for any last feedback. So, you know, I'm going to present to you tonight, the way that we've broken it up is into those four areas, you'll find within the presentation, we're identifying what we're currently doing, and then the next piece for each one of these categories is looking ahead, what we then need, what we feel like we need to do more of, or what the next steps are for us, or where we need to go. So, with that, I'll start. Perfect. So, we first started with a commitment, and we wanted to identify kind of an objective with any. kind of an objective with anything, you know, what is our objective here? And it's really to foster and sustain effective partnerships with all stakeholders via effective communication for all of our students. When we think about, this is the recipient of, of, of our, of our strong communication. It is to benefit our students and to engage all of our stakeholders. So looking, you know, above from thirty thousand feet, this really is the objective through these four, these four categories that I'm gonna talk about. So as it relates to, um, parent and family engagement, I won't go through each one of these, but these are the current practices that we're currently doing to engage our families. And from school open houses at the beginning of the year to parent conferences, you know, to the types of media, the, our Twitter handles, our blogs, our school and teacher websites, um, meeting with, um, school councils, our school events, celebrations, our school and our student handbooks. Those are the types of things that we're currently doing to engage parents, to engage our families in the district. So we thought it was important to kind of lay the foundation, to lay that baseline of what we're already doing. But then the, the next piece you'll see is what we need to do, what we feel like we wanna do based on survey feedback, based on the work we did with Jayce, based on the administration's feedback. Looking forward, what do we wanna continue to do or start doing more of? And that really involves the ongoing engagement with each of our school councils at the building level. Uh, we wanna prioritize email communication and make that a priority and make that consistent across all buildings. Uh, we want district-wide response times to ensure consistent communication. We've talked in here, uh, before about creating a parent university and outreach to our parents, outreach to our communities to inform them on things such as safety, internet safety, as well as technology, our digital literacy plan. Um, and then that would also involve parent information sessions on Chromebooks and safety. Laura and I just came from one of those, um, in Lancaster, um, earlier this evening.
So before you, you go on, so I just wanna speak to one or two of those things.
Sure.
The prioritization of email for administrators has gotta be something that we look at because it's, um, we get so many emails in a day, so many, and Joan DeAngelo's probably gets more than any of us, you know, and, and we already get anywhere from fifty to a hundred in a day. Sometimes we'll sit here at the beginning of an admin meeting and between the beginning of the admin meeting and the end, we will perceive a hundred emails. So, uh, pri, uh, that prior, uh, prioritization of our emails is, is a big deal. And so, um, and the high school is also really problematic for that kind of thing. So, um, Jayce gave us a couple of really good suggestions to go back and take a look at how we deal with some of our emails to try to lighten the load a little bit or share the load in some way or another. Uh, so we're trying to do that. We are still trying to work in that. We try very hard to do that twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround where we can. We try so hard to do that. And I know Kathy and I have talked about this a number of times, the notion that, you know, even if you just say, listen, we're, we're trying to find the answer for you, like just hold tight, you know, but rather than just wait until you have the answer, then come back. Sometimes parents think that they're not being heard. So, um, the emails i- is, is a, even though it, it creates one level of communication, it can go south pretty quickly, you know, if you're not cautious with that. Um, the, the parent university, um, this is, I, I just wanted to speak about that for a moment. Again, one of the things that came up at Stowe the other night were, were some parents who had approached us to say, you know, we're really concerned about vaping and, and what, and what's happening in our communities right now. Could you do some sessions on vaping for us so that we understand? And then one parent said, you know, I see all this paraphernalia, I don't even know what it is. So I thought, you know, probably really good, like when Tina was here and, and did a, a presentation for us last year, she brought all kinds of paraphernalia, so we could literally see exactly what this stuff looks like. Not that we can present it all because it's just too much, but it does give you good flavor. And so, um, I think that that, the vaping will be something that we're gonna do a follow-up for like a parent, a, a parent university night or parent session night. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor those things and where we see a need, we'll, we'll try to jump on it and go out there. One of the other things that's come up, and I know, Amy, and you and I have talked about this too, is about Chromebooks. You know, is, is that an area that we also need to go out and help our parents with? So, uh, these are things that are on our radar for sure. And I think just the fact that we've now successfully completed, well, just about completed Lancaster Safety Meeting tonight. I think, you know, I, I remember saying to Lisa, because at Stowe, the first, the first one, I wasn't sure how many parents we would get out. And at first, it was a little quiet parking lot. I looked and I thought, oh my goodness, we're not gonna get hardly anyone out. But I remember turning to Lisa and the chief, so, uh, the chief Landry is there. And I said, you know, even if we have two parents, I wanna run this anyway. And that's not what happened. I mean, we, we had, we ended up with close to fifty people there that night. So it was a really good session. So I'm, so I do think that the more that we do this, I think we'll start to see parents feel more and more comfortable coming out to attend these. That's our hope anyway, so, sorry, thank you.
Great. So you'll see in, on the handout that I have, but on the bottom of that, there is somewhat of a timeline. And some of those things are ongoing now. But when you look at something like a parent university or the parent info sessions that we plan to give, that's something that we want, we're looking towards the future in terms of building upon. Uh, the next area we established is crisis communication. And there's obviously been a focus on safety, particularly safety this year and how to communicate in, in, um, times of crises. And so in terms of things that we're currently doing, um, you know, we have those continued partnerships with law enforcement, municipalities, our first responders, our fire department. Uh, we've established communication and notification, uh, protocols with our district administration. Um, we've actively engaged safe committees. Uh, we've established emergency procedures district-wide and that continued use of school messenger to communicate, um, information. I think I said when I came on too, in terms of the way this administration communicates uh, through our phones and through emails, I think it's a three-minute response time before all, you know, eight of us are on text when, you know, there's a big heat warning coming up and Joel texts and says, what should we do tomorrow? Uh, we were all on it within a matter of minutes, so.
And had a meeting set up for the next day right away, yeah.
And being new, that's new for me. And so I was quite impressed with the, the level of response time and, and collaboration around that. But moving forward in terms of crisis, um, communication, and we talked about this at our safety meetings in all three towns, is building that crisis plan. We've committed to Alice training for all of our staff, uh, which Lisa Hubicki, a Coordinator of Health and Wellness, is currently in process of explaining to the Latin Lancaster folks. Um, we had two days of training on that, which we spoke about at an earlier school committee meeting this year. Um, we're holding those information sessions on safety and the Alice training. Uh, we've revised our current emergency response plan to reflect the Alice methodology. Uh, we're gonna, we wanna strengthen and evaluate protocols for varying array of emergency situations. Our medical emergency response plan in coordination with local law enforcement, our fire department, municipalities, even our traditional student drills. We've already had fire drills, uh, bus evacuations, shelter in place. And then, um, flip charts for classroom emergency procedures in crises. That kind of go-to document, that go-to manual for teachers when there is a crisis, there is, you know, an emergency in a classroom and a teacher can quickly go to, you know, that page in the, in the flip chart to say, this is what I need to do. And each teacher will have one of those in their room, so there's consistent protocols that go across the district uh, so that we're all, um, on the same page.
And I just wanna add a couple of quick things in here too. So the Alice training, again, I just wanna to note that right now, um, we've made a three-year commitment to Alice so that we will continue to build upon the good work that's been done this year. So this is not a one-and-done thing. This is, this is, uh, as what we see as a progression. Um, so that's the first thing I would wanna point out. Uh, the second thing, uh, one of the things that we're, that was mentioned that we're already doing is we do have like dedicated channels directly to the police. And, um, we are very grateful because we did get some, um, some, um, equipment from, I know in Bolton, for example, from our police department, that we have a direct immediate connection out of our two buildings in this campus directly to the police. Um, Stowe just changed the frequency, so we're just in the process of buying some, um, some new equipment there. Lancaster's good. But, so even though it says we're already doing this, we still have to consistently stay current and make sure that we're all, and that, that we're practicing our equipment and making sure that it's always, um, it's always alert, it's always tuned in, it's always ready to go for us. So, um, just would want you to know about the flip charts. Um, I just wanna make a comment on that too. Uh, we have just now finished, um, the, the flip chart emergency task force. You're gonna see it at your next meeting. Um, I, I think that it's probably gonna be close to a goal. I don't know that you're gonna make a lot of changes to it. Um, I did compare it with the NAMLIC and I think, I think we've covered just about every area that we could've. There's one, there are one or two areas that I don't think we need to include for Neshoba. Uh, but you may come back and say, no, you might wanna do this anyway, even though it's not an issue for us. So, uh, that's, that's so close to ready to go. And that has just been a mammoth undertaking, absolutely mammoth, but, uh, but we're ready to go with that too.
Right. Uh, next area is that intra-district communication. How do we communicate with each other within the district? Um, and again, current practices of how we do that. There are multiple modes of internal district communications from our internal email server. I spoke about the texting and the communication that we have amongst our administrative team, faculty and department meetings, our professional development, um, even technology, Google Hangouts where people can get online and have, um, intra-district communication. The memos that come out from our principals, uh, principals' meetings, administrative council meetings, our ad hoc leadership meetings, our weekly parent updates. Those are all ways that we're communicating internally and with each other.
Yeah. Uh, and so I'll just talk, for example, the ad hoc leadership meetings. So lots of times what will happen is we'll be in either a large admin team, uh, meeting or a smaller one and different topics will come up and we'll say, you know, we need to dedicate an entire meeting to just that topic. And so we'll immediately call for another, um, an, an ad hoc meeting. What we've done, what we did last year and we agreed to do the same thing this year is we save all of our, our Wednesdays, right, uh, every Wednesday crop throughout the, the year so that any ad hoc meetings that we need go on that Wednesday and we all know that we've got the time. So it's not like, oh my gosh, how are we gonna fit this into our schedule? We already know it's gonna be that next Wednesday. Um, and that's worked very, very well for us. Um, I don't wanna necessarily speak about the Google Hangout, but it gets back to your point about the, the texting and how we, we stay in touch so quickly. That, that particular night that you're referring to was the night when we had the heat and we were really concerned about the heat the next day. But you'll also see that, especially as we go out into snow and such. And, um, you spoke earlier during the family engagement, we try very hard to have that consistent message go out. So what we'll do, and Joel generally starts us off with, okay, I've started the, the, the Google Doc. Everybody chime in and we all get our own, a few minutes at playing with that Google Doc to make sure that we, we have everything in there that we need to. Laura generally goes in with the red pen and starts to go through the spreadsheet. Once everybody goes in. Yes, you are the fixture on those documents. By the time it, it goes out though, it's specific to each school and yet the message is consistent because we have collectively, all of us, worked on the document. And that has worked very well for us. So it doesn't matter whether you're in Lancaster or Stowe, you're pretty much getting the same document. Sorry.
Great. Uh, so moving forward, this is an area, you know, when we met with Jayce and we reviewed survey results and we, you know, we, we got feedback from the administration, that this was an area that, um, in terms of looking at that kind of data that, um, we felt really good about. Um, in turn, in terms of staying the course of what we're currently doing and communicating with each other across the district. Um, that being said, the idea of consistency, looking at faculty meetings, um, the way in which we message out, um, we talked about, um, the platform by which we use and keeping the platforms consistent across schools as well as how parents are receiving information, uh, or how we are receiving information between each other. Um, so that, that in terms of moving forward was an area that, you know, we had received feedback that was strong and, and, um, pretty consistent. The next final area is around informative, um, event-based awareness. And these are the areas where we're celebrating student achievement and we're spotlighting school events. Uh, we're do, we do a lot of that at school committees. I think you'll be hearing a lot from students from each school throughout the school year. Um, our website, uh, the school websites, the Twitter handles that our administrators have and in central office, the blogging that we're doing, our school councils involving, um, our community and PTO and our CPAC, our school-based TV and media platforms, as well as our community media focus.
So I, I'm just gonna speak quickly about the, the school and district website. Uh, this was an area that we started to do some preliminary work on last year. And so this year is just kind of that continuation. We know what the vision is for that website. We've had a lot of parents offer us, um, lots of comments, feedback and input as to what that, that could look like or how we can make it better. And we've taken those to heart. And, and so we're hoping, like, we've, we've done, we've had lots of meetings on this. I think we're really close to being ready to do the actual work, although we've, you've done some already. I, I know that you and, uh, Cindy have already done some early work on this. So just so that you know, we'll be putting real efforts in this, uh, through the month of October and November. The goal is to try to have something out there around December, January, that, well, probably more like January. That's the goal. But we didn't wanna put that in here just yet because we're just not sure if we can hit that target or not. But that's what we would love to do. Okay, I'll wait to, actually, I'll wait till you go to the next.
Uh, so looking forward, I think this, like, um, Brooke said, this is an area that we really do wanna grow as it relates to kind of spotlighting what we do in the district, um, as it relates to the website and the webpages that we have for our schools. So, uh, we're looking to consolidate, reorganize our website for those four areas, uh, those three areas of clarity, consistency, predictability, accessibility for people when they get on. That is the face of the district. When people wanna find out something about Neshoba Regional School District, you go to the webpage. Um, we are currently researching, utilizing online media platforms to distribute that kind of news to our community and track, uh, the analytics and really look at elevating the most useful content on our website and really streamlining, streamlining that, um, and making it easy for people to find information. Um, you'll find that come, this coming month, we are gonna talk, taking a look at different templates and what different templates might look like for our website and our webpages to grab, to grab our audience and take a, really take a look at what is the most useful information and how people can find that information, um, with ease.
And one of the things that we also did last year, I mean, I, I focused on the work that Jayce did, um, with, with, uh, within the district, but we also took a look at things like the sheer volume logistics of the emails that are in and out of our district, in and out of our offices. Uh, we pulled that, we pulled it down for every single administrator, so we know exactly how, on the average, how many emails come in and out of our offices. Um, so we did the same thing with the website. We went back and we took a look and we said, okay, how many hits on some of these things, you know? One of the things about the website too is, you know, and this was really, uh, something that Jayce had, um, really encouraged us to take a look at is how many clicks? How many clicks does it take you to get to where you wanna go? And we need to reduce that number of clicks, you know? So that's why we're talking about the elevating of the more, most useful content. And we think we know what that useful content is right now just by when we take a look at, you know, the, the places that people are going to on the website. The other thing that was of interest that came through, um, when, when asked on the, the survey, we asked parents, like, where do you wanna get your information from? Like, is it out of this office? Is it out of this table? Is it? And I think it was eighty-five percent or more said, we wanna get it from our schools, which I understand. So, um, that also sends us a message, you know? So, uh, I, I would want you to know that it, we took a really broad look at, at this information. Sorry.
Yeah. Uh, we also talked about centralizing, uh, the oversight of webpages and taking a look at having one or two people per school that are kind of overseeing that and are adding information to that so that we keep that streamlined and we keep it consistent. So we don't have fifty, fifty people going on and managing, uh, you know, one webpage. Um, that's, that's one piece of feedback that we received, as well as ensuring the maintenance of the school website to, um, reflect current information. I know that when I came on, and that's some of the work we did this summer, is just kind of purging the website with information that was just old, that we didn't need, that didn't need to be up there anymore and determining what reports, um, should still be up there and what, what's information that's just, that's just not essential right now. Uh, we wanted to determine which platform, uh, for each communication type that we have, keep that consistent. And then finally, um, we've talked, uh, a lot about kind of submitting Neshoba highlights to local papers. Uh, we just did that. Um, this, uh, past week, we, um, sent out to local papers a write-up of the high school and the ranking of the high school and all that's going on at the high school to a variety of local papers. Uh, that was well-received, um, getting student quotes, in quotes from administrators and, um, adorned with photos and all that kind of stuff to, to really elevate that, um, spotlighting of, of events in the district.
So, uh, one, one of the strengths that we didn't realize we had was when we hired Rena Rego, uh, who was our, you've met her before for our, and she was actually overseeing the communication. I believe that made it come up, up around this table once. I believe that made it come up around this table when she was in Marlboro. So we said, hey, we've got a nice role for you. Would you have interest in helping us to create some of these documents? And then as she was going along and she was talking to different people, and, you know, I had always called to refer to it as Neshova highlights, whatever it is. But I like what she brought forward. She said, really, when you think about it, it's our points of pride. What are our points of pride in the district? And I thought that was really interesting, because when Jace Stewart first came to see us and to talk to us about it, he said, well, where's the document that shows the really good things that are happening in the district? And I was like, we don't have that, you know? So it was one of those moments in time where you think, yeah, we talk about issues, we talk about concerns, we talk about resolution for different things. We don't really talk about the celebrations. So it was an opportunity for us to kind of go back and have a rethink on that. So something that I also want to put forward is that, you know, when we talk about all of this, it's not Brooke separate from the team. You know, we are a collective team. When we're talking about things like the timing of our emails, or trying to get that parent response out, or trying to be consistent with whatever message it is, that isn't just a superintendent issue or thing. It's something that we talk about pretty consistently, whether it's residency, whether it's, and whatever it is, we talk about it as a team, and we try to make sure that we're sending out the exact same message wherever we can. And the timing is one of those things, and looking at our email structure and how we can better respond faster to some of our emails, so that parents don't feel that they're not being listened to or heard or whatever, until it's like maybe a day or two days later and then, you know? So that's for all of us to take into consideration. And I think that as a team, we looked at it and said, we can do better in this area, you know? So I didn't mean to stop you there, but I just wanted to make sure that people realize this is a team effort. This isn't just a superintendent and/or an assistant superintendent and/or a principal's thing.
Yeah. That, you know, that ends the presentation. Yeah, I don't know if Joel or Laura have anything to add or say. I do want to acknowledge the work that they helped on this. The prezi was Joel's, the initial prezi was Joel's brainchild at the beginning, which was great. And I think the way in which he presented itself was great. Laura and I had a very extensive meeting in her office one day and working through this as well. So the work that you folks did on it was essential, and I thank you for the help with it.
So Joel, Laura, anything to add?
I just think it's always, you know, one of the things that I really enjoy about being an administrator in this district is the culture where, you know, we look at what we do well and where we can be better, and then we put our heads together and bring in experts to say, okay. Because, you know, there's always a desire to have the best process that you have, but it comes down to looking at different systems as well. And that's been really helpful for me as a principal to just dialogue with my colleagues, to dialogue with experts like Jace Stewart, and sort of rethink how we are messaging, how we're getting that message out, how we're responding, how we're having that two-way communication with our families, how we're building those relationships and that partnership. And I'm really excited about the work that's being done, that's, you know, in process, and I'm looking forward to what I hope will be just a continued trajectory of success in communication with all of our families and our community.
Thanks.
Laura? I think I did help. I think we continue to want to grow and get better and be as consistent and as transparent as we possibly can always, because that's what's best for our students. So that's where we start, and we look forward to grow. So we look forward to the year ahead in supporting Todd with, you know, he's very humble.
He is. Too humble.
We've been really new very much.
No.
And so we're very pleased to have him here with us and really help bring us together so that we can grow together as a district. So we're here.
I do think, Joel, your point is well made, too. You know, when you take a look at some of the reports that Jace generated, I found it fascinating to read through, and some of the suggestions that were on there, I never would have thought of that. So you're right, when we bring some of these experts in to help us think this through, it's incredibly helpful to us. So that's a broad overview. Thank you. Any questions, comments for anyone on mic?
I'm wondering, based on all the different communication areas, the current practices, are there things that we do in this district that are unique, that are really not done in other districts? Or short of that, are there things that we excel at, that we do really, really well? So in other words, are we sort of, are there any areas where we're sort of trailblazing? And we're doing things that other districts don't really do, trying new things? Or again, short of that, what are the areas that we can look at, self-evaluate, saying, we actually do this really well?
That's a great question. I don't know that I have an instant answer, but I would tell you this. I think we communicate more than any district I've been in before. I would say that.
Internally or with the community or both?
Both. I think both. The type of communication that we have internally with our administrators, that's what I'm used to. So I don't know necessarily that they would be used to that. I don't know, because I wasn't here before, so I don't know what they are used to. But certainly, what we do right now is my comfort level. And I love that, because we all, as soon as anything, for example, I mean, this is a perfect example. I mean, I think three administrators today had something go down in their schools that they needed me, like that. And right away, and then, you know, like Laura was providing different updates throughout the course of the day. You just need to know this, you just need to know this. And so I know, you know, one of the flags, and this is an administrative, probably something a superintendent would be comfortable with, but at the Stowe meeting, I'll go back to the Stowe parent meeting, there was one situation that was brought up in that room that I didn't know completely about. Not one situation, where one parent came up and said, well, you probably didn't know about this. Oh, but I did, you know? And, well, you probably didn't know that I was the dad that did this or said this. I actually did, you know? So as a superintendent, that was a very good feeling, because that means that I'm being fed all the right information at the right time. So that's why you saw the stay the course. I think we had this communication even this summer. Do we want to stay the course, or do we want to do something different? And everybody said, no, we're going to stay the course, because it works for us. And the timing is just so quick between all of us, and that's, as Todd said, that's an interesting lesson to learn when you come into this group, is how quickly we respond with each other. So, but I would say overwhelmingly, I don't know about trailblazing, but I think that collectively, we do a lot.
The collective volume of the communication culture, I guess that's what it sounds like.
I mean, I will say that the one thing I picked up on, and Brooke asked me this, I think, in my final interview, why, and she said, why Neshova? And I said, because you're student-centered. And that's evident. It was evident from the outside, and that's a foundation for me that's very, very important. And so I know that that's a foundation, that all of the other things that, when I said I was coming here, and people said, oh, great DECA program, phenomenal robotics program, wow, the performance. All of those things are built on being student-centered. And that was my answer to her.
And I would agree. And the nice thing is that when you're hiring people like that, you're all of that same mindset. And so that just strengthens the infrastructure of your team. So I don't know that I can think of anything that's trailblazing. That doesn't mean, though, that we're not. But, you know, to be honest with you, I'll give you a different example. Being at the superintendent-in-chief morning meeting the other morning, when I took a look at the Nemlec, the different printhouses that they had there and such, I could clearly see, and looking at through different flip charts from other school districts and such, I could clearly see that the work that we're doing right now is miles ahead of other districts. So right now, and it was funny, because again, I go back to Stowe, I don't know why, that's just kind of bizarre. But when I was at a school council meeting in Stowe, one of the, it was at Hale, actually, and one of the parents asked me, well, what keeps you up at night? And I thought, wow, that's, no parent has ever asked me that, what keeps you up at night? And I sat there for a minute, and I thought, what keeps me up at night? I said, I'm worried that I'm going to miss something with safety. I'm worried that there's going to be something that I haven't thought through, because you're thinking about it all the time, you know, whether it's staff, or students, or administration, or municipal, or whatever partners, like, have you thought it all through? But when I take a look now, and I see exactly where we're going, where we're going to be by the end of the school year, and I'm looking at other school districts right now, I feel that we are in a great place. So. Other questions or comments? Elise?
This is really great. I really appreciate hearing about all the work that's gone into this. Am I only a quick question, just because I didn't see it in here, but how are you weaving the teachers in each building into this parent and family engagement piece? You know, from my own personal experience as a parent, they do really well. I don't think I've ever had a teacher that my kids have had that have not done really excellent communication. But, you know, obviously, you want them to buy into this and be part of this whole consistency and clarity and predictability piece. And are they a part of that? Will they be a part of some?
Well, I'm going to turn this over to the principals. I'm going to start, and then I'll let both Joel and Laura speak to it. But your point is well taken. I think that what you'll see, though, is that the level of communication, the type of communication differs as the students get a little bit older. And one of the things that we would really like to take a look at eventually, I mean, we're not there right now, but is what's that level of consistency look like at the high school? That's my bigger concern right now, so that there's a nice level of consistency there, because I'm not sure that there is right now. I openly say I don't think that there is. So that's an area that's almost a little beast unto itself, you know? But other than that, I think, you know, when you're looking at your elementary and middle schools, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of that's kind of laid out. The expectation is laid out with the staff, with the administration. So, and because the administrators connect with each other all the time, they're always comparing notes. What are you doing? What are you doing? You know, so that communication is pretty consistent. So Joel and Laura, I'll turn it over to you.
I think it's part of the culture of the school communities, and we're very fortunate to have very strong cultures, I think, in our schools. And all of our teachers are very responsive to the needs of families, because it's what's in the best interest of the students. So I kind of think about it in two parts, is one, timeliness, when questions and concerns arise. And all staff know, they follow the same rule 24, 48 hours, and most often it's less than that. And like Brooke said, they're great about letting us know ahead of time if there's a potential need for support from our end, too. So I think that that's just part of our culture. In terms of celebrating, acknowledging events and student work and student growth, I think we do a good job at that. We try and celebrate that through our websites, and teachers have Twitter accounts, and they're communicating with our families by sharing pictures. And some of our teachers have blogs, and all of that's great. And I think it's a continued area of growth for us. Some teachers feel more comfortable and confident, and others are still, you know, on the cusp of growing in that area. But I think bar none, and our school council feedback supports that, that generally our parents, I say generally, and I think the majority of our families feel really supported with communication from our teachers. And that's a testament to our teachers. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'd just add to that, too, that, you know, that, you know, adding that consistency piece is important in looking at, you know, the technologies that are available as those continue to evolve and how we can help our teachers wrap their heads around what that looks like in terms of fitting that into their communication plans, you know, as we. And again, thank you for your support of the one-to-one initiative, but using those tools that are embedded within the work that teachers are pushing out to students and parents as well, and how that will continue to evolve in terms of that, that there's the passive communication, these things are going on, but that two-way communication as well, that you're dialoguing about the expectations and the work and achievement that, you know, we want our communities to know about.
Other questions?
Question? I mean, you, school councils have come up several times. They're in two different parts of the presentation, and people have been mentioning them in the discussion. I wanted to ask about their role in communication, particularly with like the parents and the community, because they seem like they serve a really important purpose. But maybe this goes back to consistency. It feels like they may have been used in consistency and inconsistently in the past, and maybe that is, that's up to the principal, and just looking for clarity around that, and particularly how the work that the school councils are doing then gets disseminated back up.
So I'll start, and then I'll have you both pick that up. I think that that was one of the areas we also identified, so I appreciate you bringing that up. That was one of the areas we also identified last year, is that there is that level of inconsistency throughout. So that, we've even already had that communication around this table with the administrators and looking at, trying to look at school councils through a bit of a fresh lens. That doesn't mean wholesale change. It just means that can we tweak this a little bit differently so that there's a more of a consistent approach, consistent expectation, consistent anticipated outcome, that kind of thing? So that's kind of where we started with that. But so you're absolutely right. I think that there's some areas there that we still need to do some work on. So Joel and Laura, I'll turn it over to you.
So I think one of the, you know, the biggest roles that our school councils play is in, you know, working with the principals and developing this school improvement plan and looking at, you know, what we do well and where we can be better. And so from a communication standpoint, you know, our school council just finished our new school improvement plan, and there are goals around communication that are very closely aligned to the district improvement plan so that, so that level of consistency is consciously worked through. And I think, you know, just in terms of having the, you know, a form of the meeting with that, you know, invaluable opportunity to dialogue, that, you know, are your constituents, if you will, is there something that we need to know about? Should we, you know, add that as an agenda item, that kind of thing?
Laura, anything to add?
No, I would reiterate what Joel said. They're highly instrumental in the work around our school improvement plan. And we make concerted efforts to make sure our school improvement plan meets our local needs and addresses what the goals are that are articulated by the district. And they're very instrumental in that work, and throughout the year, measuring that work to see where we're at. And then attempting to celebrate it, and I say attempting, because I always feel like we can always do better. We can always do better in everything, and we can do better in that area, is how can we acknowledge and really celebrate all of the great things our staff and our students are doing? So I think that would be an area of growth at our school councils, at least from my perspective, could look towards this year. I think that's something great that we could consider. And we really see them as a representative group.
They're really a touch point for the community. They're the pulse, you know? Because sometimes as an administrator, you can pick up certain pulses. You really have to rely on others that are out there all the time for that, you know, to either affirm or change your direction or whatever. So I see them as very valuable resource to our schools. Other questions?
Comments? Well, I just, the comment that I want to make has to do with, and I want to piggyback on, what Elise and Rain brought up, and I think it comes down to the issue of consistency and holding the same high expectation. We've got to communicate for everyone. I know that in the past, when this committee has spoken about use of technology in the schools in different classrooms, one of our big issues was a lack of consistency, that there were some teachers that did it a lot and some teachers that didn't do it at all. And how can that be okay? Because you want parity. You want to know that kids are getting the same or similar experience or comparable experience. And it's not what a child gets isn't teacher-dependent. So I appreciate your comments about looking further into consistency in communication or having what the standards for communication will be at the high school, because I think that's important. But also, it strikes me in other districts where I have worked, there were times in the year when the school councils would come and make a presentation to the school committee. And just, and I don't know that that has been the case here. But anyway, it gives us a flavor of what goes on, because again, looking at the past, going on school websites, you don't see the agendas, you don't see the minutes. going on school websites, you don't see the agendas, you don't see the minutes, you don't really know what's going on. So if, if there's going to be more consistency around that, then that would be great. Because they are, they do play an important role.
Absolutely.
At the schools, and it would be good to have that, that recognized and have the expectations around that, so. But thank you. This was the, the presentation, um, I thought it was, um, it touched upon the important things. And it was, and I, I made this comment to Todd at a, at a meeting, it wasn't death by PowerPoint, so thanks. It moved.
Thank you, Joel.
And I, I liked the cheat sheet that went with it, with the looking forward. And, um, look forward to seeing how it pans out.
I, I'm looking forward to it, too. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, um, the superintendent's, um, goals. And so we take a look at them in the materials packet, just to remind you. Our goal from last year was to have these done in June, and you may recall that at the June 11th meeting, we did look at, um, the superintendent's annual plan. Brooke mentioned that she needed more time for communication for all the reasons she mentioned, and I think that that has really come together well. Um, but we did look at the other, the other goals, um, the professional practice goal and the student learning goal, and there was, I think, um, I don't want to give anything short shrift, but I, I don't think there were any questions or concerns raised, but that being said, if there are, I'd like to start with those two goals, to see if there are any comments or questions for goals, um, particularly about professional practice and student learning. Mike?
I, I, I wondered for some time now whether as, I'm sure that there's a straightforward answer, but as part of the digital learning, uh, sorry, the digital literacy plan, do we have, um, something in place to disseminate to the kids about digital citizenship and our expectations for that? Especially, especially considering we've got these, this, you know, unveiling of the Chromebooks and sort of new technology responsibilities that are associated with that.
You'll see, yeah, you'll see that come out in the digital literacy plan that will be presented later this fall. Um, you know, every, every student who has a Chromebook went through a digital citizenship lesson at each of the schools, um, as well as the, the rollout process. And then we've orchestrated Parent Night on October 18th, which is going to do the same thing for parents. Um, that's an information night to kind of explain the digital literacy, the one-to-one Chromebook, as well as, um, inform them on the digital citizenship piece that their, that their kids were and their students were exposed to, yeah. Quick question.
Other questions or comments about the professional practice goal? And student learning?
I just have that comment that I think it's, it's really helpful to be, you know, sort of seeing each of these pieces come forward so early in the year, and...
Earlier than I had anticipated.
Right. And, and just seeing, you know, and having such a clear timeline of, you know, what to expect, and, and, and very clear, you know, sort of pieces that we're seeing. Um, it's just really helpful to kind of put this all in perspective for me, and think ahead and say, okay, so then we're going to see this in November, and then I, you know, I have all this context built from, you know, all through the summer, and obviously into the beginning of the school year. So this is really helpful.
Thank you. I, I'm hoping that you'll feel the same when we, when we roll out the digital literacy. In fact, you know, we were talking the other day, and I think you're going to see the digital literacy, we're going to take a similar approach to how we've taken this, because we just feel that this is really clear. So I, from our perspective, it's always clear to us, but of course, we present, we say, did that go well? I think it did, you know? So I, I think that we felt really comfortable about, you know, for example, like even presenting the second piece of this tonight for the, not, not just the prezi, but here's another piece. And that was because, you know, we were talking through so many details, and it was like, we need to put this, we need to articulate this in some type of clear format as well. So I felt really good by the time we were ready for tonight, that we had the prezi, and we had the supporting documentation to say, here's what it's going to look like. So I think you'll see us take almost an identical approach for the digital literacy, so that it is clear. So I really appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Mike?
One more thing. Um, so Brooke, your, the, the professional practice goal addresses, um, safety measures. And there's like, obviously, a tremendous emphasis on that.
Yeah.
Is that, is that because in your tenure here, you, you saw that there were some glaring deficiencies in that area, or are you, um, or, I guess as a district, are we just addressing these emerging realities?
We are not addressing emergency realities. Um, we, we are in terms of modernizing our approach, but it was because I felt we had gaping holes.
Okay.
And I say that very openly. Um, you know, the fact that the flip chart is like almost 20 years old, that shouldn't be, you know? There should be something that's kept current. And I, I'll, I'll go to that as an example, like, a lot has changed inside of 17 years, 20 years. A, a lot of things have changed. I wish that that had been kept more current, and it wouldn't have been the man with undertaking that it was. Same thing with the crisis plan, you know, that we're closing in on, like, I'm hoping to have that kind of wrapped up by the end of November. There really isn't a, a current crisis plan. There will be, and we're on the way to getting there, um, but that was, that's, that was a hole. Alice, I mean, we were doing pieces of it, but I didn't ever feel that we could go forward and say, we're doing Alice. Now I would tell you, we're doing a fair chunk of Alice. We're not, we're never going to do all of Alice. I'm just not comfortable with that. But we're, we're doing a fair chunk of it enough to say, yes, we're, we're doing a lot of Alice within our district. So, no, I think, um, I think there's that, that piece, but then I think that there were also other things, you know, like, just simple things, um, like the proper demarcation of our doors. That was something that just wasn't done. So we could never say, go to Hale School, door number D3. There were, there were no market, nobody knew. And so, though, there were simple things like that that had to be done, um, our police didn't have any maps of our buildings. There were no, there were no footprints anywhere for our police or fire. And so that was, I mean, it wasn't, that wasn't a man with undertaking, that was kind of a, oh, we can, we can do this, we can pull this together.
But that was a pretty significant.
It was, and especially because, you know, and, and talking to our police, they would, they would say, and they're so dedicated, and they, they say, if something happens in Lancaster, so they'll be there. You know, so, or getting them all the keys, so that they all have keys for all of our buildings. Some of the things were simple, maybe it took a little time or effort, other things took huge amounts of time. The, I'm going to go back to, and I think I've already shared this with you before, but like Parkland was one of those days where, you know, the chief said right away, you know what? And, and he was absolutely right, and what, there were lessons learned within minutes of that whole thing. And it was like, yes, you know what, you're right, we're going to have to go back and do a revisit. So that's why I say, that's not what was driving us, what was driving us was the holes. But we certainly, along the way, we're, everywhere we could add or learn or tweak our process, we have done that. So as I say, when I sat there the other morning, I thought, we are so on top of our game right now in this area. It feels good. It really does.
That's great.
Um, I have to apologize. I have to back up a little bit, because I wanted to review the process, and I, I'm sorry, I jumped right to looking at the goals, but just, and again, we did this in, in June. Um, in terms of the process, it did come up about Brooke's self-evaluation. Mike, it was over the course of last year, where Brooke uncovered the fact that we had a huge problem in the area of safety. Brooke spoke to, um, feedback in her, um, evaluation, as well as other data that informed the development of a communication role. And so, um, that's what she uses to form the, uh, the annual plan. Additionally, she selected, um, um, elements, I can...
Yeah.
Yeah, elements from the, uh, the standards for evaluation that she wants to focus on, and we've poured out on those. And those were the things that we saw, um, last year. Um, after we talk about, uh, communication, um, we will, um, talk about, um, acceptance of the goals or their changes from the beginning. So, I'm sorry.
And if I could, if I could just add to, you know, I think there are other things that happen in your world as a superintendent throughout the course of the year, that even though this is a, an area of focus for you, it isn't the only area of focus. And I think that that's really critical. Like I, I was teasing the other day, like, for example, when that SOI came through, I, nobody could have told me how much work that thing was going to take. That should have been one entire year of the work, because it was so extensive, like the amount of research, the amount of bringing the different players to the table to find out details. And it wasn't an area that you could, you could make mistakes in, like you just, there were no mistakes that could be allowed on that, you know? So when you have things like that come up, this, this is a, this is a piece of the work, but it's not the daily work, and it's not the unanticipated things that happen in your world. I mean, for example, like, I, either way, whatever happens, um, you know, with MSBA on that SOI, whether we get, you know, accepted to, to queue up or not, you're going to have to make a decision, do we do this again next year? Let's say we don't. Let's say we don't get queued up. Then the school committee is going to have to make a decision. Well, you know what, we're going to resubmit. I will go back to the table then, that's not on here. But there are some other things that have come up that we've already talked with MSBA that I'll now articulate on the new and approved SOI going forward. But we know that the SOI that I've submitted, we can resubmit. But that's just, that's just an example of other things that come up in your world that you just haven't seen coming at all, that, that take, it copies amounts of your time.
Um, uh, on the first, the, the goal that we were waiting for the development on is the, um, communication goal. We saw the plan. Um, I didn't know if looking at the, uh, the goal in the superintendent's annual plan chart, if there was anything that anybody wanted to, um, ask questions about or comment on. Um, I, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I did want to, um, I, I think we talked about this at, at PSC, um, about, particular to this, it would be all the, the things that encompass this plan, wherever possible to collect data about. And we talked about the, um, the retweeting and all that, that other stuff. So, um, I don't want to hold this up, but I would like some, um, and please let me know what you folks think. Um, just a listing of some ways to, uh, collect data, um, because it's, it is, it might be some one of a challenge to determine whether or not it's successful. I mean, you can say, oh, we did this, we did this, we did this. Then what's the SOA? And, um, I don't know if there could be follow-up surveys to parents, staff, administrators, um, but that's the part that I personally think needs more development in terms of, of outcomes. Now, I don't think it's a deal breaker to approve these, but, um, just in terms of when we come to the table, because the next time we see this, once we approve these, will be in January for an update. And so that's the type of thing it would be good to see.
Good to bring forward, yes.
And then for the end, it helps us in terms of writing the evaluation to have that type of, of specific data.
So that, that's a great point about the, of the retweeting, and, um, you know, after, I'll go back to, because the Stowe meeting was the first parent meeting, and I saw definite uptick in number of Twitter followers over the year, you know? And I, I saw, and I was saying at the personnel subcommittee meeting that that's one of the things, if you really want to watch a retweet, watch when the school closure thing starts to unfold, and watch the number of times that those things get retweeted. But, you know, it's interesting, um, at the football game the other night, there was just a wonderful picture of Casey Hool, our SRO, with kids as they were tailgating before the game. And it was just such a great picture, and I said, can you send that to me right away? I'm going to tweet it out. It, it was like all that evening and into about 1:00 in the morning, I just kept hearing it ping, 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 it kept being retweeted. And so there are moments like that, you just, I'm very appreciative, and I appreciate the follow. Right now, I have about, in that 500th neck of the woods for followers, so. It, it, and it's, but I don't live or die by Twitter, I don't do it every day. Um, it's something I try to do a couple of times a week, you know, as, or if something big is happening. I try never to advertise. The only thing I generally advertise is when we, as we get close to the Thanksgiving football game, that's probably just about the only time. So otherwise, I would be doing that all the time, and that's not what the, it's intended for. That site really is just intended to say, here's a showcase of our district, here's some key things that are happening across. And I try to pick and pull from, whether it's fine arts, whether it's robotics, or drone flying, or choirs that are performing, or the football games, or volleyball, or whatever is happening. So I try to do a mixture, so people just have a flavor of what's going on in the district. But I think that that's a great point, Kathy, and I think that I can bring some of that forward.
Okay, and maybe we can talk about it more maybe at PSC or something, because I think that, um, we may, it may show us where we're trailblazing in some areas, the feedback that we get, and let us know, you know, what's on the right track and, and what needs more development. Any, any other feedback or comments?
Oh, just to say, in that vein, something I love that MASC does, the Massachusetts Association School Committees, for anybody watching, is like every time you go to a presentation, or every time you have an interaction with them, you get an email or a flyer that says like, how did we do? What did you like? What would you like to see better? One through five, just bam, here you go. And they, it really makes you feel that your feedback is...
Valued.
Valued, yes, wanted, um, and then I'm assuming they do things with that, because they're doing a great job in general. But, you know, like, we're doing safety nights, we're doing things where we're interacting with the community, and it seems like it would be, or even intra-district, that would be an option.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Okay, well, at our meeting on the 19th, the PSC, uh, developed to bring forward the superintendent's goals. And so as part of our oversight of this process, we're required to approve the superintendent's annual plan. Um, so, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the superintendent's annual plan as written. Second.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. So now we are going to committee reports. So, Steve, um, question you want?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot something. As we're all...
You're not kidding, are you?
Just pointed that one.
No, I just did that on purpose, to see if I can pay attention, because obviously I'm zoning out. Okay, so the other thing that we have to do is, um, approve our overarching goals for the upcoming school, um, year. Um, these were developed originally, I think last year we were working on, and they're actually up here. We have our operating protocols and our overarching, um, goals. And so, um, we, um, reviewed them, we are going to review them every year, so on the PSC meeting on 9/19, we reviewed them, and we kept them as-is. The biggest change was the, uh, goal that was number five was elevated to number one, and, uh, we just moved them down accordingly. So I didn't, if, does anybody have any questions or anything they want to edit or consider?
I'll just mention that goal, the goal number five, you know, I...
The new five or the old five?
The old five.
Okay, which is now number one.
Number one.
Okay.
I, I think that the school committee, um, last year's school committee did a lot of work in this area, and I think has really moved us far along in, with this. Um, I, I feel that moving forward this year, I, I'm not asking you to change, change any of the language, but I really do see this year's work being not nearly as extensive as the last year in, in pulling all of these reports. I mean, I just think to the finance subcommittee, the B&amp;W committee, and the amount of work that that took to get that all pulled together for reports and such, and saying, what are going to be our regular reports, what can we anticipate? And, and we, actually, we kind of said that same thing tonight, actually, in B&amp;W, you know, it's just, it's so much easier now, because these have been, they've become regular reports for us right now. We all know that Pat is going to report out in the second meeting of the month. We all know that she will bring us the, you know, the money in the bank, so to speak, and expenditures, and we, so it, I think we've really come to a, just a really healthy place with this. So I, I don't want people to look at number five and say, gee, I thought that they were already, they already did this. I, I think that this is ongoing work for us. I think that this is ongoing work for us.
Any other comments, questions?
The only comment I have is that I really like that you moved the old five to the new one.
Well, happy since the new one, yeah.
Because it's not that all of these overarching goals are not important and critical to our work, but I really do think that that sort of, what's now number one, you know, talking about engaging our communities and our vision and that, you know, a strong district is our strongest asset, is community, really is, you know, kind of sums up everything that we're trying to do as a school committee. And it's nice to see that right at the moment.
I think we did great, too.
Any other comments? Steve?
You want me to comment on the Budget and Warrant?
Not yet, because we have to approve the overarching goals.
Oh, that's right.
I need a motion to approve the overarching goals for this year?
I move to approve the overarching goals for the school committee for this year.
Second.
Steve, all in favor? Thank you very much. Now, Steve, go.
We had a relatively brief meeting this afternoon. And one of the things, I mean, we looked at, you know, approving our minutes from the previous meeting, which we did. We looked at the Triggers Report. We looked at the electric reports we'll see next week, next, at the next meeting. One of the things we, I think we all tended to agree on at the meeting was that with the new reporting structure of the reports that we wanted, things should go much smoother this year and not be as, I want to see time-consuming on the point of the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee, but also as stressful as it's been in the past. We've, I mean, last year we moved a lot, a long distance from where we were previously. And this year we've moved a long distance or hopefully to where we're going to be. The administration develops the budget. We look at it. We examine it. We question it. We tell them where we think there could be cuts. And it should be a relatively easy process this year.
The process, not the, yeah.
Process. Not necessarily the battles, but the process. And that's, that's it for Budget and Warrant.
And I would agree, too. I think that this year, even just involving our principals already, again, they already knew going into the summer, "Okay, yeah, we're already starting to talk about next year." And so I would agree, even, I anticipate a much smoother process this year because it'll be our third year now. We are not reinventing that wheel anymore. It just feels so different, so, so different.
Thank you.
Personnel report. Well, we recommended to bring forward the superintendent's annual plan to the school committee, which is the group of goals. The next couple of meetings, we'll be working on looking at the school committee manual that was developed last year. And we're looking at it to see if there needs to be any updates or revisions. So we'll be working on that.
That's another perfect example. I mean, the amount of work that went into that manual for two years. I mean, and now here we sit and we can review and like, again, another feel-good moment that we're at that point.
I don't know, did, was this policy have anything to report? Susan is not here, but I don't know if anyone, she called anyone to give a report. Maybe there are no updates.
I don't think so.
There are no updates.
Okay. And then CPAC, the, on October 2nd at 7:00 PM at Emerson? No, at Don Sawyer. There will be a workshop where folks can come and meet the PPS Director, Joan DeAngelis. And then on October 9th at 7:00 PM, again at Sawyer, CPAC will have their first business meeting over here. Communication advisory?
Sure. So at our last meeting, we started sort of brainstorming and mapping out what we wanted our communications plan. So this is so tough to say, so even what you all are talking about. What we wanted our strategy to be in terms of school committee. And one of the things we talked about that was really important is upfront and being very clear about this when we're communicating with our communities, is clarifying the role of the school committee and versus the role of the administration and the ways that we communicate and the types of things that we communicate. And also clarifying expectations for people, similar to what you guys are talking about with, you can expect to get an email within 24 to 48 hours. You know, making sure we have some of those things obviously in place already for school committee, but we really want to formalize them and say, "If you email somebody, your rep from your community, you should expect to hear from them within this window." If you email the entire school committee, you know, it is likely you will hear from the chair. And this is what happens.
Yes.
And if it's a, you know, these are the types of things that we can answer. These are the types of things that might need to go to the administration, and just sort of broadly. But to give people a sense of what do you, what should you expect when you reach out to us? And what happens. And the other thing that we started talking about was the school committee portion of the website and making that clear for people. And we were just sort of talking about, oh, we need to, you know, reach out and see if we can get analytics or find out some more about what we can do. And like magic, Assistant Superintendent McGuire walked into the room. And it was like, literally, we just started talking about the website. We really need to maybe see what they're taught in here at some point. He just appeared.
I do that sometimes.
It's a gift.
Shazam.
It was really fantastic because we got to immediately hear about plans for updating the website. And one of the things that we are going to do as a communications subcommittee is make a little bit of a wish list that we'll talk about at our next meeting coming up this Friday. If we could have anything in the world on the school committee website, what would it look like? We're going to, we're spending some time looking at other school committee portions of school district websites. So we can then give that feedback to the team working on this website and say, "Here's what we would like." Once we have that list, we will bring that to the full school committee so that you all can provide input and feedback and anything that we might have forgotten. And then that will go to the superintendent and assistant superintendents so they can hopefully make all our dreams come true.
Sure, sounds great. Can I, can I just bring around that? Thank you. One of the things, it just made me think of it as I was listening to you speak. One of the things that we also realize is that a lot of times, and this also generated at a CPAC in some ways, but people don't always know where to go. And that's really what you're saying. I mean, I'm talking more about the clarification because that's huge between a school committee and administration. And I think sometimes the general public is confused on that or tries, maybe there's some gray area. There really isn't gray area. It is pretty black and white. But who tells you that? Who explains that to you, right? And it isn't until really you start sitting around this table, you say, "Oh, now I see how these roles play out." You know, because the roles are very, very different. With that in mind, though, when looking through the CPAC lens, and it got us thinking about the district at large, although we've talked about it before, who do we go to? Like, who do we go to first? Where does this communication start? And so Joan DeAngelis and Alita mapped out a really nice communication tree. It's a draft. We're still working on it. But I looked at it and I thought, you know, this is really a terrific idea if we take this, like, whether it's CPAC or special needs and/or what about if it's just Johnny Smith in grade two and mom and dad are upset about, "Where do they take that complaint to or that concern to? Or how do they find their, who do they connect with?" So I thought, you know, probably what you'll see as part of the communication plan now is a series of communication trees come out so that everybody kind of knows, "Well, this is what you need to do. This is who you can go to. And this is what you can expect, you know." In some, some ways, although you're not really saying this, but I'll say this, in some ways, some of the things that go to certain areas, people can't help them. And so they have to kind of go to a different, so there needs to be a redirect. And I think that's all that work for parents to understand. But the bottom line is, when you get to wherever that redirect is, there needs to be a yes-no type thing, answer that comes out, something concrete that you can say, "Oh, so we can't do this." Or, "Oh, I can do this if I go," there's no more maybes along the way. And, you know, so of course, we always hope that we're getting to a win-win or a yes-yes type thing. That's the ultimate goal. I don't know that we always get it, but we try to. So I appreciate very much the work that your communications committee is doing right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for those comments. I think that's helpful to have a visual and a path to follow. Okay. No reports from Board of Advisory or Emergency Response Task Force? Correspondence?
Nope.
No?
Might I just add, Emergency Task Force, I think you did meet, though, this month, right? I don't think you have anything to report.
Uh, Monday.
Oh, you're meeting on Monday?
Monday.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't recall. My apologies for that. Thanks.
Take a look at that flip chart.
Yeah.
Okay. Consent agenda, any feedback for the minutes? Should have been given to Alita. Is that consent agenda, all that? Items to be considered for next agenda on the initiatives calendar moving into October? The FY '20 budget timeline, transitions program update, school choice recommendation, report from food services and HR, pupil services. Which field, have you chunked this out yet with...
No, we haven't chunked it out. But this is for the month of October, but you're right.
Yes, for the month of October. Is there anything else that folks would like to see on the agenda for October at this point?
We will want to be, once we put together our recommendations.
For communication.
Communications. But I think we can probably do that during a communications update. I don't think we're going to need...
Okay.
I don't expect it to be controversial that we're going to need 20 minutes to discuss it. But once we have our meeting this Friday, I can let Lorraine know. I think we'll need more time.
Okay.
Okay. The, sorry, this isn't for October, but the digital learning update, is that November? I don't see it on there.
No, the digital, the digital literacy, the digital learning is December. We originally scheduled it actually for December 19th. We may be able to move it up, but you'll see it's in the December.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
It's all a long way to aim for the December 19th. And that's, I think that's even probably the goal that's in the plan. But we've got certainly a lot of good work done on that. If we can do it sooner, we will. But right now, the 19th is...
That's fine. I just didn't see that. For some reason, in my head, earlier, I was like, "It's November."
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions?
I make a motion to withdraw.
I was just going to ask for motion to withdraw. Steve, so...
Sorry, we didn't go to 20 minutes?
No, no, that's part of the consent agenda.
Okay, we did. See, I'm clearly spacing out.
How about you second that? Motion to withdraw. Okay, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.